Lake, are we good to go?
All right.
I might want to watch that.
All right. Six o'clock, we'll call door for the meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being.
Right. First up is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Do we have anybody here to speak tonight? Signed up to speak, I should say? Oh, we do. Okay, so let me read the spiel first. All right, addressing the board, you may present concerns to the board during the time reserved for hearing public comment. If this is the case, we ask that you, prior to the start of the meeting, sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone and state your name. Do not reflect diversely on political or economic views, ethnic backgrounds, characters, or motives of any individual. And please keep your comments concise, non-emotional, brief. And with that, we will do three minutes for a total of twenty minutes for public hearing. First up, Kathy.
Yeah. Here. Where we go?
Right there.
Kathleen Riplinger here, R I P P L I N G E R, resident across Washington. We had the opportunity, few of us here, what, a month ago, to go down.
Sorry, that's. Started the.
Go down and observe the sex ed program that you guys have here that you're going to be presenting, I assume, starting when school starts. Read in the paper that it's all had a committee and it's all been looked at, it sounds like it's going to be approved. And if parents want to get their kids off the mount, they go somewhere. I don't know at that point in time, do they get a zero grade or whatever? But I was just curious, but we did go and look at that. And parts of it were okay, I could see, parts of it were not needed. I'm sorry, I'm sixty-eight years old. There's terminology on that crap that I had to look up. And it's like, okay, so what are these kids gonna do? If you start pushing stuff down their throat, they're gonna be so confused. And when they get done, they're not gonna know they're boy or girl, or a rabbit or cow. They're, because kids absorb that crap and they do get confused easily. I know I've got seven grandkids and sometimes like, whoa. But I want to know how many people actually took the opportunity to go down there and observe this? Was there a lot of people, a handful? And did you guys all get to see the comments that they wrote down, the notes? Feedback from it? And also, who was on the committee that said, yeah, this would be good? And who went there and read it? And approved it, or maybe tweaked it, I don't know? But got a chance to look at it? And also, why were parts of it redacted? There's lines through there about two genders. Why was that taken out? I think that's very important. There is, as far as I'm concerned, there's two genders. And I just don't get it. And then video was rudimentary ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned, what we were allowed to see. Now, the handouts had a lot more information, like I said, terminology and stuff on there that, I'm sorry, I don't think our kids need that. I would like to see a basic, basic health education. Showgirls, yes, excuse my own language, but you know, you're gonna get older, you're gonna start having periods, this is what's happening. And what, boys, you're gonna grow hair, your voice is gonna go deeper. And this is why, you don't even know, hey, anal sex, vaginal sex, oral sex, you don't need that. And in the high school one, it did have that brought up. And I think it's just kind of crazy and I don't know, I don't think it's necessary. I think, like I said, a good basic health class is okay. And also, back to the beginning, you say kids could opt out. What do they get if they opt out? Earlier, you said that parents had to bring them stuff in and say, okay, here's what we're gonna do to entertain you while you're not in this class. Uh, no, that's a teacher's job. And who, what kind of training do the teachers get? So they're not bringing their personal ideas in to this classroom and start teaching stuff that they are not qualified to teach and they shouldn't be teaching.
Hey, Kathy, you're.
That's about it.
Okay, thank you. I think we can answer some of the committee questions. And I'll let Deanna speak to that.
We haven't actually bought the, brought the curriculum to the board yet because the board asked to wait till September because this is heavy budget time. So they, although several of the board members reviewed the curriculum, they, we haven't brought it for review, it hasn't been approved, none of that has happened. Okay, there was probably twenty, maybe twenty-five people that came, that, a total probably of more like thirty-five because there was a committee, as well as people that came in and reviewed the curriculum. We did have people that came in to review. We asked every person to fill the form. Some people walked out and would not comply. They just, I, I'm not sure why, most people come, you know, filled out the form. If we want people's feedback, if they're gonna come to review, fill out the form, present, provide feedback. When we bring that information, we will bring all the forms, will be in the board packet, as well as the information, we'll do that probably on a study session, not a regular board meeting. Because it's a lot of information. Based on the feedback we received from the committee, from the reviews, we, for people, the community that came and reviewed, community and parents, we made several adjustments. The only redactions that I remember, and I have to go back and, and, and so you don't quote me, but the things that we redacted were, we crossed them out because we aren't going to use them. The only thing that I'm aware of is the, the term, we're use the term gender assigned, the gender, like a gender you were assigned at birth. We are not using that term. We are using the gender you were born with, something that's more, not the word assigned. So that part was crossed out. We have, we're gonna provide some more information, like, for instance, the third grade lesson is like a thirty-minute lesson. That's all, that's all there is. There already is, the things you're talking about, about, you know, teaching girls about menstruation, all those things, those already are adopted, those already exist. So they aren't a part of it because that's already adopted curriculum. The part that we included, we tried to attempt only to include what's actually new to not confuse that issue because the sex ed portions, the other health topics, those were approved. Some of them have been, it's been a similar or same lesson for more than twenty years. So when you went in and saw third grade, oh, there's just this one lesson, and maybe fourth grade had one and fifth grade had two, that's because that's all that's new. All the other things already are in place and happen in place. Those lessons, once the curriculum goes through, if there's feedback and changes, then we'll do that again. We're making changes already based on the feedback we receive from the reviews. After that point, then, when, when we have the lessons available for the community, there'll be parent review night, where they'll go through all of the lessons with the parents. And parents always have the option of opting out. If they choose to, they can opt out of part, or they can opt out of all of it. And that is the new lessons, as well as the previous sex education lessons and HIV and AIDS lessons that we have. So there's still a lot to be done. And some of the things that maybe out in the community, people think have already been done, haven't.
And I'd like to address the opt-out concern you have about, you have to provide a lesson, or you have to provide what they're gonna do during that time. That's not, that's not the case. So if we have a class, there's twenty students, and there's two students that their families and they have chose to opt out of lesson number seven, let's just use a random thing. They would just leave the room and go to the library, do homework, do studying, something else. And then when that lesson is over, or that segment is taken care of, or opted out, then the student would return to class for anything else. It's not like they're out for a whole trimester or a whole two weeks. It might be a day.
Or a period.
A period of a day, depending on their age.
And when she, when you're approaching with the parents, that's actually what the law speaks to, is that if you're opting your kids out, then basically, parents, it's your job to teach them. That's kind of what it's, that's the intent. It's not that the parents have to come down to the school with lesson plans to fill that time.
I have a question on that. Um, so the kids.
Judy, you wanna come up here?
Judy, side horn, I just shouldn't use that, so nothing else happens to the other name. Um, I have a question on the opting out. If they, this, you do sex ed, da-da-da-da-da, well, and this kid's say, there's only five parents that want their kids learning this, and that twenty are opted out. Uh, what's, do they get a zero for that?
Absolutely not.
What do you give them?
Well, depending on the age of the student.
Yes.
And depending on the class, would be depending what we would give them, they would be getting excused absence from that lesson. At the high school level, people know that as an asterix or a no grade. At the elementary level, it would be a no grade. But it, so each grade kind of has a different tool that they use to do their grading. But it's a, it's not counting against them or whatever, if any kind like that. And I assure you that one hundred percent.
Okay, and so the kid that's in high school and they're trying to get their, their grade point level up to a four, or whatever standard they're wanting it to be for college or for whatever. What does that asterix give them?
Well, remember that they're, they're missing one lesson or five lessons or whatever, out of a trimester of class. So let's imagine for a moment, there's twenty lessons in that trimester. They're being waived from the three or the five lessons. So their average would be created on the number of lessons that they did complete, not the twenty that everybody else in the class. So that would be how their grade is calculated.
And then, my question is, when we were reviewing it, we went and viewed it. And it was, it was like, you know, trying to put a square peg in a circle. I mean, it was as difficult to try to see it and go through it and see it. You guys made it very uncomfortable for us. We were set in a corner, there was very little lighting, and we were all huddled up around a computer, and then we couldn't hear it. And then we were put in another room, which was great, but then didn't have the password. And finally, we got to it and was reading the material, and in some of the material, I believe, for vocabulary for third grade, it was a page that had L G B D, whatever the alphabet is, and it had all of the meaning of all of that. Now, at that level, is that necessary?
That is not the, that is just the adopted vocabulary the committee approved for K-12. So for third grade, they're not, that's not in the lesson, that's our district-approved vocabulary term. So it doesn't mean that they're teaching LGBTQ and what that means. It, that, that's a district list, not a third grade.
Okay, so that's not even gonna show up?
No, so.
But you have it on there anyway.
There, right, because there's some terms on that list that do, would apply to third grade. But there's probably twenty terms on that list, and they might have all applied to high schoolers, but maybe a couple applied to third.
Right. Because my concern at that level, at the little kids' level, those kids run at recess and hold hands, girls do. So what happens if there's a bully that learned this vocabulary and?
So those terms are, that sheet is for students, is for teachers, not students.
Okay.
But there's some clarification pieces that we're gonna put, some overviews, I think that'll help make them clear.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Anybody online? Hey, we are gonna close that section. Thank you. Student rep report, Yashimi.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
No report.
I don't want to say I have nothing to report, but I really don't, but I guess I can speak on something. Sports schedules are out for high school sports, so that's good. First home game is against Sunnyside. It's always a good game. I don't know, summer's going good. Yeah, I did kind of want to touch on what they talked about, if that's okay. As you guys know, a few months ago, myself and Bianca, former member, we kind of went through and we looked into this as well. And I was actually there for a few meetings at the committee. So I've seen most of the material, we read through it, what's new. And there was a lot of discussion around the vocabulary and how that fits in with, like, I guess what people deem necessary. And again, that, that's something that it's spectrum. Someone, a generation older or two, might think something's unnecessary. But when you look at our generation, who is there to learn it, who it's going to be affecting, that's something that's needed more in our generation. Our generation, for example, needs more tech skills than past generations did. They needed more hands-on skills to succeed. And so when you're looking at it over that, I see the vocabulary that, again, some may seem unnecessary, and that's fine, I get it. But in our generation, in society, and as it progresses, those are terms that are going to be used, continue to be used, and are something that everyone should learn. And that should, you know, just kind of be standard vocabulary. Not really, so.
Thank you. Moving on to consent items.
I think a motion for the consent items as presented. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I did have one question on the consent items under certificated. I know it said on there that Mr. Wood resigned his position at the middle school. Is he still moving up to the high school, or did he?
Yes, and so he, he was a TRT also, so he needs to resign that position since he will.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to action items, superintendent search timeline. Any questions regarding that? I do have one maybe comment before we start is part of this process is to have stakeholder interview groups. We discussed one, at least one stakeholder interview group. Do we want to do another, or do we think one is appropriate? And that's not the survey group, that's the interview panel.
It might be good to have a second one, just to have a variety of dates, if you can't make the first one, to have an option to have a second date.
Okay.
It was fifteen hundred dollars per.
That is true. Twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred.
Yes.
How many are in each group? Is it five or fifteen?
Eight comes to mind, but.
In the middle of five.
But yeah, it's twenty-one hundred per group to do the interview, and I guess it'd just be what we would prefer to, to do. Can we put out for interest before we commit to two groups, or do we need to decide? No, it's a great question.
It'd be good to put out something to see how many people are interested before you spend an extra twenty-one hundred dollars on something.
Yeah, we could, we, I'll ask Steve and see what he says, and I know we're gonna do at least one. It's just whether we think it's necessary to do an additional. Okay, I will reach out. I'll entertain a motion on the.
I'll make a motion then to approve the superintendent search timeline as prepared and presented.
Been moved and seconded to approve the superintendent, superintendent search timeline. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up is conditional certificate. Conditional certificate teachers.
Uh, so these are the teachers that are most are in programs or just finished up a program, need to take a test. Some of them are, are teachers, they're not technically all teachers. We have speech and language pathos, pathologists on here, we have a new school psych on here. We're doing a, a school counselor, doing a lot of work to find people, maybe on non-traditional routes, and that's what most of these folks are, come to a non-traditional route. An example would be Jay Catch, he has a, a degree in, like, graphic design, and he, you know, comes from an education family, and they thought he might want to be a teacher, and now he is teaching art for us, but he has to get his teaching endorsement. But because he has that arts degree, we can get a conditional. He has, he has some special skill, they might be in a program, there's some conditions they have to meet, and then support we provide as a district for, for all of these teachers. So this is the slate for this year. And then some of these folks will move off next year, and probably some other people will move on, but it has to be approved, that's part of the requirements for, for qualified teachers.
I had a question, um, is Erica Alvarez gonna be replacing Hayes, Mr. Hayes?
We added an extra counselor.
Oh.
So we'll have four. We're very excited that she'll be, she'll be serving for that.
I had a question as well, just a kind of a clarification question. So with these ones, is teachers have degrees that are somehow pertinent to what?
Some, it depends. So Erica already has a degree, she chose to go back and get her master's degree in counseling. Casey Blair had a degree, he chose to be a teacher. Ms. Angela Malia, she is all, just almost done with her teaching program, but she doesn't have her bachelor's degree yet. It just depends. Marissa has a bachelor's degree, she's working on her teaching. It, it varies, it depends on the person. Some are just finishing up a program, some are, are, had, chose a different path and then chose to go into teaching at a later, after, you know, maybe a, a first career, maybe the second career. And then some have finished their program, but they're required to take a series of tests. So if a teacher is gonna be, say, an elementary teacher, and they're also gonna have, like, a bilingual endorsement or special education, there's several tests they have to take and pass to finalize their certification, so.
And the reason this is important is most conditional certifications are two years. And to have these in place before the first day of school, it is kind of funny, and I'm sure as students who've seen this, we have two adults sitting in the room, the teacher's doing the teaching, and there's someone sitting in the room. By law, if you do not have a certificate, certificate, uh, certificate, excuse me, either an emergency teacher, a teacher certificate, a substitute certificate, and you're teaching, the licensed person has to sit in the room while you're doing your instruction. So we have to make sure that this, the conditional certificates are in place and ready to go before the first day of school. Or we pay double, we pay the person who's in the room, plus the substitute, who's saying, I'm making sure they're doing the good job.
Very clear. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the conditional certificate teachers.
A second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the conditional certificate teachers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign, motion carries. Next up is the emergency certificate teachers.
Similar story, sometimes we, sometimes a teacher might, they might come in, they already have an emergency certificate, sometimes we apply for the conditional, depends on which qualifications they fit, but they're really in the same place. One, one exception on this page, Teresa Colmar says, old PHS, we, I worked today with Jesse Wilson, who's in our news, but Director Nikki Swanson, and we are gonna move the developmental preschool back to Riverview this year, like, now, and. And he's over there going. Um, we're gonna, we're moving her anyway, and so, you know, we want to make sure that those students have quality opportunities to integrate with their peers. So that will actually change as of today to Kane Riverview. But these teachers are in the same place, we're required to have those approved by the board. It's kind of that whole idea that you're aware that we have teachers in the, in this situation, they want to make sure that the board is aware that, that we have people with special certificates working for us. Lots and lots of wonderful educators on the list that are just working through all those things to get their final cer, their permanent certificate, so.
The other reason that emergency and conditional are important, and this timing is important, is if you can imagine how many is on our list, and then you multiply that by population and number of districts, the time for turnaround, even for a, 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 a complete cert, certificate at this point is sometimes ten, twelve, fifteen weeks because of the turnaround. So if we don't do this emergency route, and we're waiting on this, we could be starting the first day without having our proper paperwork. So even like if you took your exit exam on the tenth of August, the likelihood of us having your scores and your reports and your certificates back before December is probably slim.
So Selena and I work together, we, actually, I think every person on this list already has their certificate because we don't want to deal with the two people in the classroom, so they have, well, they already have their certificates. Uh, there's nobody on the list that doesn't already have it. I think we all have all of them, except the one.
Yes.
One that just finished part of a program, so she can become eligible to get her conditional certificate, that's our school, future school site. So, yeah, we try to be very proactive. We've been working on these since spring.
Any other questions?
Go ahead and make a motion then, that we approve the emergencies, certificated teachers as presented.
Second motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve the emergency certificate teachers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. Next up is the educational support personnel roster bargaining agreement.
Just so you know who these people are, this is the people that work mainly in our district offices, not necessarily in the buildings, per se. So that would be our special education secretarial team, administrative assistant team, and so on. So bargaining union of about eleven or twelve or something. Oh, seven, sorry, seven, so it's a very small number.
Thank you.
Questions? Comments?
My comment is, this was really easy to follow. I really liked the way it was presented, so thank you and for highlighting the changes in the document and then with the comment text. It was very easy to see what the changes were.
I would agree with that. Very helpful. Go ahead, hear a motion.
I make a motion to approve the ESPP bargaining agreement.
Been moved and seconded to approve the ESPP bargaining agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. Uh, next up is vouchers and payroll. Any questions?
I had, well, sorry, go. Oh, okay, sorry. I had one. Oh, sorry, number nine, zero, seven, eight, nine, eight, for Microsoft. Where are the Chromebook notebooks leaves? Are those the cases for the Chromebooks?
The micro?
Yeah. Okay.
What the black ones, see, armor on them?
I have a question. From what I see, most of the students, at least at the high school last year, had these cases. Are these replacements, extras? Were there schools that didn't have any? What, what is it?
You might be able to speak to it better, but I know we just got new Chromebooks, like, another set this year, and so it's been, it's been helping.
I can't fully, I, I don't fully know, that's be more of a, Sean, more of a question for Sean. But I do know that a significant number of those just don't come back. People lose them all the time. A certain number more of them are just so trashed, or, you know, just so trashed or dirty, they can't really be cleaned. And we're, every year, we just add more Chromebooks and more students to hand out. It's a good problem to have.
Okay, so then with that question goes, are we finding students if there, these sleeves come back in that condition?
That, I don't.
There are finds, I know I do see money come through. It might just be whether egregious or accidental, and so a lot of the students purchase group of insurance. And so if they had that, then you could cover the cost, and we have money set aside for that.
Okay.
Um, but if it's like the initial, like, the initial purchase of them, then we would, obviously.
Do it, yeah. Okay, and do you happen to know off the top of your head the difference between the amount we're taking in from fines versus the amount that are being bought to replace those?
I do not know of that off the top of my head, but I know that we still have, um, quite a bit of, over ten thousand in reserves to cover expenses like that.
All right, thank you.
It is out of coverage. Does that, does that answer your?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve vouchers and payroll.
I second. I second.
Been moved in second to approve vouchers and payroll, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next up is the, is resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three capital projects inter fund loan. I see.
It's me, any questions on that, I tried to put a lot of information on the cover sheet, but um, any questions on that, or would you like me to elaborate?
It's understandable, thank you.
Very exciting.
A big day.
I do have one question on the, and I see the overall dollar amount and it, part of the, your timeline, and it says complete tennis court construction, do we, do we have an actual adequate bid on that at this point?
No, we do not, and and so this inter come on, with it being four hundred and fifty thousand, that was because we don't really need of the full amount to fund the entire project. That was enough to get us started, to see where we're at with the tennis courts, and and then it would be funded with the rest of the money from Patterson, and um, cause it was five hundred thousand, and less interest. And then we'll also have some general fund money from like the old high school project, you know, have a little bit from there, depending on how far over we go. Uh, but I, so I tried to aim high enough where it doesn't stop us from moving forward, um, but not, not too far.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I think, Andy, did you have an, any kind of initial estimate on tennis courts? We're thinking like three fifty, you know, like, we're looking at maybe like three fifty, just to give you an, an idea of the number. But we haven't moved forward and we're not planning to move forward yet, like we wanna get the track done, figure out where we are initially Tuesday, we're not, and then we can move quickly at that point then to get the quotes for the tennis courts. But that is the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-one twenty-three capital projects inter fund loan.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, since it's a resolution, we do a roll call vote, uh, Genie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I too will vote yes, resolution approved.
I hate that, that's. I did not get the interest, the warrant interest rate, I should have asked for that one for today. Would anybody be amenable to changing the resolution date to that tomorrow?
I make a motion to amend the resolution approval date till tomorrow, do you wanna talk about that process, you go to the county, right?
Yes, so the county provides the interest rate um affected the day of approval to, or the, um, for the, the, for the loan, sorry, my voice. Um, so if I had got that earlier, that, um, today, I said much today's rate, that's when we would write it into the resolution and you would approve it. So even if we don't transfer the money today, it's still that, the, the interest rate that we have to use legally, so that was my fault, I did not, I reached out to you that time. So if we do it, if you approve it for tomorrow, I reach out to the county, say what's today's interest rate, and then we would write that interest rate into the resolution.
So we're just gonna change the adopted date, so we'd read adopted this tenth day of August as opposed to the ninth day of August, so.
I apologize.
So we're, we'll start over. Um, we'll have to withdraw the previous motion.
So I would make a motion to withdraw my previous motion.
Second, Genie?
Draw my.
Okay. Yeah, think through how the, how this is all gonna work, considering we just voted on it.
So I almost brought my roll call vote.
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
Um.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you make um motion to rescind your previous?
You have to rescind the initial motion, yes, we did it right. So we'll do a roll call vote to approve. Your withdrawal, right?
Boy, this, we need like a.
Proper, yeah, yeah, you should know.
No.
Oh, sorry.
If I can, if I can get the interest rate from them.
Um.
I think we withdraw the motion, the approval of the resolution, so I think we've covered that.
Okay.
Make a new motion.
And then one new vote.
To approve resolution twenty-one twenty-three capital projects inter fund loan as amended to change the adopted date to the, from the ninth day of August twenty twenty-three to the tenth day of August twenty-three.
And I'll second that.
Genie, I'll second that, okay, and this, there'll be a roll call vote on the amended uh resolution twenty-one twenty-three to be effective August tenth. Genie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
I too will vote yes. We're good now.
If you'd like, this is within easy reach.
Even knew where, right where it was.
Nice, nice job, Noah.
Okay. So moving on, uh, resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three accounts payable, accounts payable and payroll.
Kind of full of mistakes.
But let me explain first, and then you can explain the mistake. So the reason this resolution is important comes in multiple reasons. The main reason that a resolution like this sits in a, in a, a school district is vacations, is illness, unpredicted emergencies. Um, we have an amazing business office staff, but right now they are in a situation that they can never be gone on the two voucher cut times of the, because if it doesn't hit the date before your meeting, we cannot mail the check. Okay, so what it allows us to do is if they're gone sick, the button doesn't get pushed, the next day they come back, but let's say it's tomorrow, right? They're back, we can run the payroll after, and then you do two voucher and payroll approvals at your next meeting. That's the purpose of a resolution like this, okay? So I wanna understand the purpose of the resolution, it's not used very often. Um, sometimes once a year, it sometimes happens at Christmas, sometimes happens, um, depending on the date of spring break. There's some odd times of year when that would happen. And what it does is it allows us to continue to pay our vendors and our staff without having to hold an emergency board meeting at the last minute to be do that, so that's what this resolution is for. So that's the purpose of the resolution, and he can explain what happened, um, and why the number is different if you printed it a while ago, and then we did a correction and she can explain that.
Yes, so, um, we received a sample policy from another district, so I took that, reworked it, they had actually a threshold. So on Friday, I worked on selected language, I changed the formatting, I printed it, I had it approved, and then apparently when I saved it in such a quick way that. So what you see in front of you is actually completely different version than I was going to present, and when I went back to try and find it. That didn't happen to me like ever, and so, um, unfortunately, that's the case though, so the, at least the bare minimum change I would like to make, and and we had, uh, it's been updated on the printed copy, is changing the account payable amount from not to exceed five hundred thousand to one million five hundred. The reason being, right now, we've got capital projects and we have really did invoices that go through, it's not to abuse the authority. Um, the language I was going to present was a five percent variance, so payroll, no matter what the cost is, because if we have to pay it, we have to pay it. And and right now, that's already in practice, so we already pay payroll, you approve them, um, the next board meeting after payroll, so that's already in practice, this just covers us from a resolution perspective. So my, my recommended language, I just get payroll and up to five percent of a variance of the previous month for expenditures. So that is within trends, and if that's outside of trends, it would still have to come to you. But because this language does have a threshold, we even have to adopt a threshold, um, so my recommendation is one point five million. That would cover us, it wouldn't have any issues, but again, it's not, you're not gonna lose any visibility, it will still come the next board meeting, and if in that case, if that happens and you can buy any of the vouchers, we have to go back to that company and get that money back, it becomes receivable on the district, that it's then the job of the business manager to, if that, get those funds back and and get any kind of resolution, so. It's similar to what we do now, the only difference is, you know, we cut the checks and then if you don't approve it, we void it, so we just don't send it out. Um, so in that case, it does, it does extend that a little bit.
It's on us, on me, so would we see a copy of that check that you would send out?
Yes, it would be on the next um board meeting, just like the way you see it now, it would be exactly the same, you would still be approving the action. Um, same thing for key card, you know, we, we schedule the payment, but then it still has to come in front of you through the voucher. Um, except for, it's all it is, is the timing difference, if we have to cut an individual check because whatever, you would, small budget, we should have payroll and they need it by Friday and you don't have a board meeting for three weeks, cause it just so happens to be in, you know, one of those timeframes, you need to get, this is a good end of the authority to cut that check and then put it up the next board meeting, so I am still a little nervous about putting a threshold, I'll be honest. Um, but I, I still think it's low risk where you're not losing visibility, we've gotta conduct business, we gotta do what we gotta do. Um, so it's up to you, but my recommended language is just at least accounts payable, payroll, that should cover us, but there might be a month out there that it's over that.
And then we would not be able to approve it above that amount.
So I, I would probably recommend updating the language at some point, right now, we do have a, um, an employee who is going to be out for the next bachelor run. So if it is adopted today, it would give us the authority to run it a couple days later in the month and then bring it to you first thing in the morning.
Okay. And so the onus really is on the superintendent to communicate, to be transparent, to say, you know, everything on here is standard business operating procedure. Um, here's, um, I do want you to be aware of X or Y, the onus is on the relationship and the communication between any school superintendent and their board and being responsible for um, the financial well-being and the responsiveness to debt.
There is also a policy we could look into adopting as well, for the, in the procedure side, the policy and the procedure to cover if we have to get to that point where we're.
With us being at two meetings a month with the, in the communication and the way we're, I just don't foresee us ever doing that. Those are some districts that are astronomically huge and, and um, there's problems or there's whatever, we just have a strong communication setup here with students and all of us, that I just don't foresee having to go that way. Um, unless we were to, I kind of, it's like anything, if you learn from your mistakes, right, we have a problem, but this is a pretty standard resolution, um, in districts, they traditionally would write one a year to make sure and and make sure that we've honored it, and what you can also do is if there's ever a problem, then you could say, well, we're not gonna do that again, right, because by having a, a timeline too, it's not a forever thing.
I did have a, I did have an answer on that, uh, someone just has to make an amendment to either rescind the vote or to um amend something previously voted on. Um, anyone interested, it's chapter two, many, page three hundred and eight.
Well done, Noah, thank you. Any other questions?
I'll ask later, I I have a follow-up, but I'll, I'll, I'll talk with uh Kim later about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Nothing?
Yep.
I will entertain a motion.
A motion to accept resolution twenty-two, twenty-three accounts payable and payroll as presented.
Wait here a second.
I'll second.
Been moved in second to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three, um, accounts payable and payroll with the updated amount not to exceed one five million on accounts payable. Uh, so roll call vote, uh, Genie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Two will vote yes, uh, resolution approved. And that is the original copy that I passed down for your review, just so you can see the change in. Yes, I don't know, might as well. Uh, next item up is the track project.
So this one, um, this is not really an action that can actually be approved by the board, but for visibility and to just make sure that everyone is on board with it, and I thought it was best to put it in front of you as an action item. Um, this was the bid for just the replacement mid-grade, um, it's option number one, and you already know the funding is coming from the inter fund loan and then free picture of the. You have some visibility, they did provide us with an updated quote with just the date change, just because it said, you know, it expired ninety days or whatever, so we do have a big copy of the university.
So I have a quick question on, uh, I missed, we're going with option one, right?
Yes.
Uh, the VSS two hundred. Um, so looking at the track, I I never, like especially the jumping area, the sand pit, um, you know, it's outlined in grass. Most of the sand plus the track gets covered in grass. Um, and I, is, wh- what would be, does it have to have asphalt underneath, number one? Or if it's not a track running surface, can you do something temporary and and just cover that all up?
Under where the grass area is?
Yeah.
We could, we could have it done in asphalt in between, you know, when they scrape the track, when they redo the track, it's a substantial cost. But that wouldn't have to be done super smooth like the track would, so we could have A and B or, you know, whomever.
Talking about the ribbon piece between the, where the long jump is and the track, that kind of.
That little weird strip of grass, I mean, yeah, it looks nice, but it also gets grass everywhere in the track.
That is something that was brought up to buy, to me by the coaches, from the track coaches about, it also, um, I don't know that it deteriorates, but when we mow, then the grass goes on to the turf and you have to blow it off. Then we do water it on a regular basis and you do have water, we know, as we know, erodes, right, and so we have that piece. Um, so that is something we would like to consider, we don't know the cost of doing so, um, but it is something, and then there's kind of a catch twenty-two. You also have the piece between the retaining wall and the and the pits, so if you're gonna take out this strip, then you kinda have to take it all out. And, and it's not, as you, as you all know, it's not hard to cap the irrigation system, but we do then have to take out the grass and cap the irrigation. And then it turns in from this strip and now it's bigger, and that's the best way to do it, but we'll have to have an estimate for doing so.
I, I can get that, I can get an estimate for that and try to put it in between when they scrape the track and then resurface it. Cause once it's resurfaced, I I think it's off the table.
Yeah.
Mainly because of the equipment.
Yeah, and I, I just was bringing it up after looking at it this weekend.
Boxes, you know, like for the long jump and stuff, although they're not the norm now, they are completely legal and legit with, you know, fluffing up, putting some, or sanding and so on. Uh, the only thing that is gonna have to be technically replaced at this point is the javelin runway. And in fact, I've got the chop saw in the back to pick up, we're gonna cut the asphalt out tomorrow, Friday, and then patch the league. But the, the uh, the running strip is, I think, thirty-six or forty, or whatever inches, and the norm is now like seventy-two.
We're gonna do a rectangular piece there instead of the paddle looking piece.
Oh, so they're gonna, they're, that's, that's the only thing of the whole system that's gonna have the asphalt redone.
Okay.
Everything else, they're, they're confident that it can be, you know, sealed and crack sealed and it's a pretty good shape.
You should tell them how good they said the track actually looked, that the foundation.
In fact, when I told them, it hadn't been done since, I think it was ninety-three, cause most of these tracks only have, I think, twelve to fifteen years, is what they say the lifespan, that's, that's a good track. Well, we're twenty, twenty-five years or whatever, so.
And he had us do some things, when you look down the track, it doesn't have any of this, and it doesn't have any really, like just the, the bed that it was laid on has resid- retained its sh- shape quite well, and the few cracks that are there are in like in patchable places and they're very, with the proper patch, he said, you won't ever know that they were there when patchwork.
It should go well, in fact, uh, I, I've been emailing him over the last couple of days, and he's talking like it's a two crew scenario. First crew will probably be here late this month, and then, uh, we, I sent him our game schedule, and homecoming, I think, is October sixth.
Should be done.
So the goal is to be one hundred percent done, everything clean and gone by the sixth. There's a possibility that either the second or the fourteenth, one of those games, we may have some equipment off on the sides. But that's the worst case. And I think it's probably gonna be the latter one, cause the, the band, they have band camp on.
The seventeenth and eighteenth.
Is that what it is, seventeenth, okay, so, so those two days are band camps, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday, Friday.
It's Thursday, Friday of next week.
Okay, so probably, my guess is that Monday is when they'll try to jump in and, and knock it out, so it's probably gonna be the first game.
See some camp, equipment off to the side.
So I can see some camp equipment off to the side.
Okay.
That's yet to be decided yet.
Okay.
Soon as they send me some firm dates, then we'll be there next Tuesday, then I'll know.
My next question on one of the, and I know you don't have it in front of you, but one of the bullet points, it says um, for that BSS two hundred, it can be cut top coated at the end of its useful life with a new structural spray or upgraded to a BS three hundred by adding a seal coat and a new embedded wear layer. Um, is there, is that a protective coat for the surface itself or is that actually the new?
It's a spray on.
Like polymers, I think.
Like a bed liner spray.
Oh, okay.
And actually it's, uh, so I mean, I, I, I didn't ask him how far down the road you could do that, but I mean theoretically, if we were to go say eight years and then it's still looking real, you know, real, real tight, uh, go ahead and clean it real good, have him at it and buy us another twenty maybe. I, I haven't got it in my mind.
That's part of maybe the facilities maintenance plan.
Not going so far until we're done, you know, doing some upkeep, kind of like a roof or something.
Throw, throw a ten-year or, you know, eight to ten-year out before, before it gets like it is now. Where we can go through and have it refinished and painted and lined and not, not be in this boat yet.
Cheaper to upkeep than to completely replace.
Usually, yeah. So.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
So Whitstrand is, uh, they're looking for occupation or occupation.
Occupancy.
Occupancy. I think the end of next week, uh, we keep the outside doors last week, uh, the office. Uh, Terry's going to be out, I think, in the next two days. Uh, you guys will all see in the hillside. The fabric comes in to cover that, I think Tuesday or Wednesday. They're actually, the, the crew pulling the shrubs is a week ahead of my schedule. They sort of showed up unannounced, to be honest. It, it all worked out.
You got it done.
Yeah, yeah, it's done. It looks nice. It's what you got.
I've got some things on my thing I can help fill in.
Okay, thank you. So we do, we probably, uh, I think we should vote on this. It's an action item. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the track project.
Yes, yes.
For BSS two hundred. Surface material. Can't wait to see that BSS.
Second the motion. Been moved and segmented to approve the track project. The BSS two hundred surface. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Great work.
Thank you. Uh, it's, it's great to see projects move forward, especially ones that are needed this, uh, you know, for, for our kids in this upcoming year. So, great job. Uh, next up is.
Far, we might want to think about like another grand opening or refinishing or something that, because this is going to be really fast. Something we might want to just.
We can work on communication.
Get the rotary invite.
It was something to entertain and I don't know where the appropriate time is actually naming the track. Uh, I think we've got a few pretty famous athletes that have come from this community that, um, may, may more something like that, so.
I have a question.
Maybe?
What was that track project? I know I, we heard several months ago, it was like two hundred.
Three hundred and sixty-four thousand and change.
Three hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Exactly.
Just help.
Yeah.
No, he's, he's shooting higher than that.
Oh, you, okay, I'm sorry. You want to do something? Oh. Oh, that's right. Uh, so next item is first reading of policy thirty-five thirty fundraising activities involving students.
And this is a lots of recommended policies, um, but I
Any questions?
I'll make a motion, we, uh, pass the first reading of policy thirty-five thirty fundraising activities involving students.
Wait here a second. Anthony? Been moved in second to prove, or for first, approve first reading of policy thirty-five thirty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is first reading of policy sixty twenty-one interfund loans.
That's something for me. And again, in your language from lots of, and so we're doing interfund loans. You just didn't have a policy in place to regulate it, which is okay, but it's just puts that in place.
So I'm going to expand on why we're catching up on some of these things. This is some of the things that Amy was tasked with and been tasked with. Um, when we receive state audits, things that they're looking for is that we've had a policy in place, we run a resolution or we go out to bid, whatever it might be. This resolution is placed and this is how we're conducting business. Okay, now there's nothing that says you can't do a resolution without the policy. But good business is having a policy the way you run and then you do things within side it so that the policy is your root and your resolution amends, flexes as years and or time they're worn. So just for anyone listening or wondering, why do we do an interfund resolution and then this, we're, we're trying to put the policies in place so that when we bring a resolution forward, it men, mold, melds itself is the word, melds itself better to what we already have in place.
Any questions concerning the policy? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy sixty twenty-one interfund loans.
Second, Jason.
Been moved and segmented to approve first reading of policy sixty twenty-one interfund loans. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is first reading of policy sixty-one thirteen capitalit- capitalization threshold for leases.
Um, I mentioned this like the last time and, and just kind of kind of base about one percent, uh, but really the state auditors recommended having this as a threshold, so.
Any questions on policy sixty-one thirteen? I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve first reading of policy sixty-one thirteen capitalization threshold for lease leases.
Go here a second. Been moved and segmented to approve first reading of policy sixty-one thirteen capitalization threshold for leases. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. That is it for action items for tonight. Moving on to discussion items. Uh, discussion item A is student handbook policy and procedure verification.
So there's a lot in the student handbook. I was tasked, if you remember correctly, to take the handbook, look at the policy numbers that were in there. What you have in front of you is policy and procedure thirty-two oh four that we currently have in place has been reviewed and no changes am, are needed. And it was last updated March of two thousand nineteen. That's why it's in black type and there's nothing attached. Thirty-two oh seven, however, is quite a bit different. Thirty-two oh seven, you'll, you'll notice the thirty-two oh seven P versus the WASDA thirty-two oh seven. They are very, very different. And so it's on the table for discussion. It's put in front of you. Remember how you made the comment that you liked the track changes on that one contract? Our goal that Selena and I will be working on will be to combine them now and put the track changes in place, starting with ours. I wanted you to be very aware that it will be ma- way more red strike through and changes than there will be retention of information. I remember when I was first being taught and learning how to do this. I used to just go in and change them. Well, it's like then I didn't have what it did. What did it really look like when it was original? It had so much strike through that I couldn't do it. So I felt that it was important or Selena and I felt it was important for you to have the what WASD recommends, gives you time to read it, what R says. And then you'll notice that most of the pieces down in here are chunks of totally new language about bullying, about some different pieces in there. And that's what I want you to have there. So when we go to first reading, you will have the strike through document, but you will also have in your records what the original documents look like. Because it is, when they're twelve or fifteen pages long to begin with, and then you strike through and you end up with a thirty-page document full of red lines and you got a black word and a red line with one black word here, it just gets it very difficult to read. So I felt it was important to present that to you. Same thing goes with thirty-two ten. It was reviewed and there are no changes made. Last update on it was December of two thousand and nineteen. Um, the, there are no changes made to thirty-two twenty-four, the student address code. There's a little bit of language in thirty-two twenty-four, the, uh, the procedure. So that will be presented to you and some changes and track changes. And then thirty-two forty-one, um, the last time, if you look in your notes there, the last time that was reviewed, um, is, was like, so you wouldn't even remember like twenty-four years ago or something. And so the same situation arrives there. The, it's just this huge astronomical difference. So I wanted you to have a little bit of time to read and do whatever, and then we'll put that together for you for the first reading.
Could we have this back during a, a study session so that we have a chance to really talk about it?
Yes, and that's the reason we did the discussion this week. We'll have the study session next time before you even have the first reading at our next meeting. So that's, there is a method kind of to the madness um, to allow some time for processing, especially for our public and everybody to really see what's going on. Perfect, thank you.
I really appreciate the way you put it together, the current and the proposed. And I see a, a bullying policy and harassment policy that was last, it was approved, I think in two thousand and three and then last amended in two thousand and eleven, I think. More than every thirteen years perhaps, we should.
Well, and I, I, I think Noah said it very well. What was relevant to one generation and times change, what needs to be addressed differently? We need to have language and wording in place. Um, in two thousand and three, I don't think we knew what cyberbullying was even a discussion twenty years. You see what I'm saying? So you didn't have the language. It's not that the policy was poorly written. It was relevant for the time. It's just not relevant for our time.
Great.
Great work.
You want to talk about?
So I will skip over to.
Uh, we got one more.
Oh, policy and sixty-two seventeen.
Yeah, there was a lot of questions. Would you want to just touch on why we're doing it?
And so that was another recommended policy from the state auditors office from the actual, the twenty 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 twenty-one motorcycle. Yeah, so then for our twenty-one twenty-two cycle, they're like, hey, which policy? We don't have it. So it's just, it's recommended to get out there. Now, we do not use, um, EFT for AP vendors. So the, the P card one that I speak of so often, it is actually through, um, the treasurer's office and the money gets pulled from them. We are not sending cash out electronically for these. This policy would expand it where we could, if we decided to, but we want to make sure that there's controls in place. The policy and the procedures would need to be in place before we even think for one second to go to the next step of doing this, but it opens the doors. Uh, but right now, all of our employees, uh, most of our employees have direct deposit for payroll and we don't really have a all the things in place to, to manage that. So we still, we do what we have to do. We make sure that is, um, you know, what needs to be done, but this, um, like I keep saying, having something in place to be able to follow, to refer back to if people have questions, um, it's just good practice. And this one specifically was recommended by the
I'll give an example of why things like this. So remember cart before the horse, right? So we started direct deposit. We do all of these things with that policy being there. It's not that it's horrible, but somebody would, could question what, who, who, who said that it was okay to do that, right? So we're trying to put that in place. Um, I don't know, for those of you noticed, I asked Ms. Saban to go out to my car. We have securities in place. I couldn't open my computer because I couldn't authenticate my login on my phone because it was in the car. So it's just like that. We have policies that have to be in place and so we, you know, you know what I'm saying? So you have policies that we just need to put in place and we need to follow them.
If there is any recommended change, so this was just lots of policy, it's simply in procedure so you can see it. If you have any major concerns with the language or if you really wanted to rework it before we bring it back for a first reading, um, please let me know or send me an email, call me, just let me know what your thoughts are, so then we can bring it back for that first reading.
Can we add it to the work session next week?
That's like for discussion or do you want to be a first reading?
Discussion, it's on my work session.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You're right. Yes.
Any further questions on discussion items? Next up is reports. Amy?
Alright, so I have the financial report today. So you'll have June and July. Um, Freddie, the one comment I will make about July, um, well, June. Our fund balance did drop below the threshold. However, um, we are, we have a ton of direct claims that we're working on, you know, hearing direct claims. And so with those revenues, we had accrued them, we would still be within our fund. So, um, we are trying to end the year where we said we were going to. Like in the, from the study session that we had last month. So, uh, these are just the official reports of where we stand. And then in August, you'll see quite a bit of a change because of, like, of these grants. I'd be close to probably a million dollars that we're going to be claiming and getting back in.
So I'm predicting, um, um, that we, I, my goal is to be one dollar better than what you set out for. I'm predicting that we can be maybe fifty thousand or seventy thousand, right? Does that make sense? My goal, and Peggy and I talked about this, was to be one dollar better than we set out to be. Um, we spent quite a bit of time today talking about properly coding employees. We will talk, well, not quite a bit of time. We spent, had a good discussion about properly coding employees, are, um, are the grants being spent properly? Is the S R money being spent properly? All of those prices. So my personal goal or commitment to you is to be one dollar better than what you planned for when you approved the budget and my, my, that's my promise, my, I didn't, my goal, but my goal is to be able to share with you even better than that.
My hope is, um, I, I, and I've asked for this several times, I want to see a hard copy in my hands while in advance of having to approve a budget. And as of yet, we haven't received a hard copy in our hand of the working budget. And, um, and that's really important. I'm still waiting for that and I really, uh, I, I need that before I'm going to sit down and approve any budget. Okay, so, um, and I want to see the, the whole document.
Yes.
Any more? Okay, thank you. Deanna?
Uh, so we're just, we're working away on a lot of things. Kim will share some things, or no, but we are planning professional development days on the twenty-first and twenty-second for teachers. We're going to be focusing on, um, student learning, um, how to provide equity for our students through using our priority standards, establishing priority standards, um, using learning targets and success criteria in the classroom, to really, really understand what it is they need to know before they walk out the door that day. And if they don't, what can they do the next day? Um, the principals are doing a great job. They're really helping lead that work and they, along with myself and the instruction coaches we're doing, we will be leading the professional development for the two days. We'll start right after Kim's done with her, her, um, introductory welcome back, um, uh, session on the twenty-first. So we'll be here at the high school for the, um, twenty-first and twenty-second. All of the buildings, teachers also work the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, so they'll be in their buildings, also doing some building meetings and that, you know, getting ready, you know, emergency plans and all sorts of things, but also professional development in the buildings. Our pair of educators will be back on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, the twenty-fourth, they're going to be doing a a training call, bringing out the best in children, which is about, um, positive student, um, behavior strategies, ways to build relationships with the kids, um, accepting kids the way they are when they walk in, in the door, accepting all kids and appreciating all kids. So we're excited about that. And then also going to do thinking maps training and thinking maps is something we've done in several of the buildings. And they're graphic organized in different ways for kids to think and, um, you know, process information and work through, um. Their learning, so they'll be doing that as well. We do have on the eighteenth, on new staff induction, new certified staff induction. The seventeenth is like their safe schools and here's your forms and some other things you have to do on the eighteenth will be here. Um, if you wanna stop by and say hello to the new, new certified staff. And we do a, a day, uh, about half the day of training and then they get to go back to the buildings and do some work with their coaches and principals. Um, I did do a walkthrough at Woodstrand yesterday, uh, furniture walkthrough, um. When you see it next week, teachers have not been in yet, been allowed to be in the, the move was officially over, I think, yesterday, but. Um, teachers might have been in there today. So it looks like when you just moved into a new house and you have boxes. Lots of boxes piled up in classrooms, but the building is really beautiful. There is some few, you know, little things that they're working on, some of the network and things that they're finishing up. But, um, Sherman Alden has done a really good job. The grounds look really good. Their playground is so cool. Um, it's, it's really good. And then the, I, I just want to, um. Give, give you a copy of this. This is a draft. This is, I want to, you know, um, I know we wanted a professional looking document and I will say we will. Because we don't have printers that can print edge to edge, this will need to go to a printer, but my assistant, Jalisa, did this.
That's really good.
And it's beautiful. So, um, you, it's still in draft form. They're still, you know, we need to go through and I, I haven't had the, uh. We have been busy every minute of the week. She just finished this up today, uh, but it is, she's just done a beautiful job. So take some time to look at it, um. And if there's any, you know, feedback, you find something you think or you feel like, oh, I don't know about this format. It feels a little bit. Odd or hard to read or something like that. Um, thank you to everyone that sent her pictures. We've did a lot of work to get pictures of our students and graduation and activities and games and. Um, dancing and all sorts of stuff. Um, so I just wanna say she just has this. I was so impressed with myself. This looked so good. Um, and so we need to get this to a fi- finalize. So I think it's coming, yeah, the study session next week as well, so we can get it finalized. The polling party and get through before, before it's over. We did do some work today with the leadership team on laying out which years we would be doing. Planning for the activity, what year would it be, you know, like the, the whole plan, do, study, act cycle. So. Like, okay, we need to have a early learning plan. So where are we gonna plan? And then we're gonna plan and work on that this year and then we're gonna do, so implement it the next year. And then the third year, we're gonna look at it and go, did this, that, aren't we? It's great. And we just move on or maybe we need to make some adjustments. And then act is, well, this is the data we need to do on that. So we might need to make some changes. So it's a continuous cycle. So. We'll have that. It isn't gonna be a document that will have it, like people will be able to see at our website, but we won't make it a part of this. They'll make it so big and so commerce, I might think it might be. Almost become confusing, but if you ask me to see Jalisa.
So I'm gonna expand on that. So what we're hoping to see is the strategic plan in a, in a formal document that can be shared. Then on the website, you'll see the, the final document, but then the working documents and the evidence will be there. So the meetings and the sign-ins, very few people will sit down and read, you know, twenty seven pages of. Chicken scratch, but we will scan that in. We will put that in. People need to know who was on the committee, who was doing the thing. What, what was the work? And that can be just really transparent. Um, that's what we're striving for is, is that. Then the other part about this, and we talked a little bit about it, is who's doing what? What is doing? It's not a. Oh, this is a pretty document. Let me put it on my shelf and I'll visit it in four years. And you know, this is where. When somebody asks about money or wants to do a project or needs a new curriculum, we'll go back. Is it in our plan? Right? And that's, that's the foundation of what a strategic plan's about.
Looks good. You guys did a tremendous job. So I appreciate it.
That's Deanna in her curve. She gets the credit for that.
I, we, I mean, we did the work, everybody did the work. The team did the work to get to this place, but yeah, Jalisa made it look. Pretty, very professional. It was beautiful. Yeah, so thank you. I will pass that.
Really nice job, Deanna. Really nice job.
Yes, and again, look through it. If you see something, say, Deanna, page two, look at, you know, send it to Jalisa and I, and that there's something. On, Kim and I have looked at it, but we have not fine toothed it.
And the other thing is, is when you look at something, like first forty five times, you could stare at a typo. Or, and then somebody else reads it and you're like, why did I?
Well, and I, I did the typing and she, like, I typed this all originally and so I definitely probably didn't see it at this point, so.
And you know, I, I talk too much, so I always write a board report and you can just have it. Um, I'll touch bases on it. Um, you can pass the rest of the students to have, just some things on volunteering and being in the public. It was great being at National Night Out. Um, I've got one more. Um, I was at National Night Out. Um, we served about just under a thousand hot dogs. Um, the police chief, um, really needs, he really did cook all the hot dogs. Um, it was a fun night for all. We saw students and families and the things. The pool bracelet was a hit. I, if you, I don't know if you went by the pool, but it was a crazy show. All the people.
I was the cat, I was the cashier there that night and it was really wild to be cashiering. We had to call in like. Uh, two extra cashiers, cuz it was just, it was a way bigger turnout than we were expecting, to be honest.
Yep, yep. I was like, um, I did an opening, um, kind of a welcome introduction at the Chamber of Commerce on the first and the Rotary on the third. As well, um, it was just so nice to get to know people in a different way. On the legal side, we solved one H I B issue. We're still working on a couple of other things that are going on. Um, as you know, the Patterson agreement was signed and it's in effect, so that's a big thing. The handbooks went to print, everybody. So that's a big one. Um, went Facebook Live, um. Days are running together yesterday. Um. We, uh, according to Lori Green, I'm gonna try and do a quote, not really. But according to Lori Green, we made more money yesterday than they've other made on surplus of sales combined. Now, I don't know that it was.
So it might have to be a hundred bucks.
So we're gonna, with the help of Tammy and Kim Bolt and myself, we're gonna open on Saturday during Saturday Farmer's Market. From eight to noon, um, and gonna try and see if we can get some more of it. Um, so that's going on. Um, the invitation went out to your emails and to the stakeholders about the Woodstrand Open House. Um, so it's five thirty to six thirty it was. We will issue it or announce it as a. A special meeting so that you can all be there. Um, Architects West and together with our team, we're gonna put a nice little. What we call a barbecue dinner, something like, I'm sure Kevin will speak a little bit, we'll do whatever and just kind of. I call it Chris in the building, right? We'll do that. I do want you to know in case you hear about the word occupancy permit. Our staff are able to be there. Um, we have what's called a fire watch. Um, so we actually have a human paid for by Sherwin-Elle, not us. Who's literally sitting there making sure that they can pull the fire alarm if they see smoke or. That is by law what you have to do so that you can occupy the building and have your teacher setting up the classroom without the occupancy permit. Um, so I know it feels a little strange, but that's what the law is and we're gonna do what needs to be done to be able to open the building. Um, reminder, Ice Cream Social on the seventeenth. Um, the district opener on the twenty first, those are all been slated for special meetings. So if you'd like to come, we'd love to have you. Um, facilities, I don't know if you've been by the old high school, the one big tree is gone and the other two have been thinned out. Um, the shrubs at our, uh, the stadium are gone. Um, the state, they're gone. Um, we have, um, Architects West has, um. Graciously donated their time for the retaining wall piece. So we'll be able to put the retaining wall in, um, in the next. Weekish, two weeks, week to two weeks. So it'll be done before the first game and the tarp will be down. Um, we have, they're working on the drawing for the path. Um, there's lots of pieces that go into that. Um, we're talking anywhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for the path. Couple of things to know, we are gonna put good, um, quality ADA accessible, um, porta potties at the bottom and at the top. We will put signage so people understand if they need to drive to the top, right? Um, there will be, you know, the, the main pathway is open. Um, if you just need to go down and take a look, we're. Um, getting ready to do some fencing and some different pieces. We'll be painting both ticket booths, putting some new fascia on them. I am looking for volunteers out there in La La Land, um, and here in the room. I'd like to, um. Sand and paint the arc biker sign. Um, you know, it's kind of white and it has the things on it. Sand it off, paint it, get it fresh looking since we're working so hard and, and doing that. So that's kind of going on, um. Oh, the safety film on the windows, we got the quote. We're getting ready to do that. It came in six thousand dollars less than we planned. So thought everybody helps. Um, we did the track, the tennis.
Kurt, the security officer at Woodstrand negotiated with the vendors.
Oh, awesome. Yeah. We have some exciting news on our, um, grass and our samples, our soil samples and our fertilizer. So we're moving forward on that. If you drive by, I won't tell you where they're at, but if you see these green, bright green patches. You'll know where the fertilizer sample is working and where it was done. And so we should start seeing some improvements. Um, bat update. Um, uh, Jesse Wilson's not here tonight. I don't know. She's out in La La Land. We have no bats in the building for eleven days now. However. We now have bats hanging on the outside of the building. So September one is the magic date where we can do some true legal eradication of the bats. Um, and so, but what we're going to do between now and then is we'll start monitoring where they're actually going. Basically what's happening is they can't get back in the building, right? So a bat, for those of you don't know, is kind of like a homing pigeon. Or the chicken that always goes back to roost in the same spot, right? While they're going back to the building to roost, to sleep. And they can't get into where they're sleeping, so they're going to the nearest place. Um, our first admin team was today. Uh, we got a couple of principals here. I think it was a good way to start our relationship. Uh, we met from eight to noon and we met at Heights Elementary in the conference room and then we went up to lunch and. Really trying to get to know each other as, as individuals so that when we need to have. Deep conversations or whatever, um, we've got some, we started planning to meet some of our C B A requirements of who's evaluating. We're still in negotiations with the P E A, but I'm hoping that we can get that done soon. And Mike Wells, we hired our interim, um. Business manager, he worked alongside Amy today. Um, he said it best. Things change a lot in two years. That was his statement. So I think we, um. He's super ready and I think he's very knowledgeable, um, but you know, like just a day of just getting passwords. Stuff that you can get in, taking a lot of work. Um, we still are looking for a school nurse. We do have one strong lead in that and so that's where we're at. Questions, yes?
Uh, one question. Maybe I'm out of the, what is safety film? Like for the?
So, um.
It's a, it's a bullet resistant film that goes on the glass, I think, on the outside and on the inside. Keeps it from shattering.
It makes it more like car glass where it can break, but it takes the other.
Makes it kind of tempered to that.
Great. Any other, any question?
Uh, yeah, I just have a couple of things. I'm enjoying my monthly visit with Kim. I've seen many appearances. Um, we went tonight out, had a good time, lots of people and everybody should check that. Um, I went to Chamber to listen to Kim speak, had some nice comments on people. And I had a few comments about the pulse of Prosser.
I just wanna echo about the pulse of Prosser. I've heard lots of good feedback from people about. Seeing you out and about and then also the being online, um, very visible. So thank you.
Anthony, looking into third party negotiators for the district, but nothing to report yet. Okay, thank you. Lisa?
I think that is great that we're moving to preschool and to K R V. I was really happy to hear that. I've heard from lots of parents that they felt that their kids have been isolated. They didn't have a chance to go to assemblies or just, you know, get in line with everybody to get their school picture taken or with the other kids to get lunch. So I think that's great to incorporate the preschool with them. That's wonderful.
Thank you, Nikki and Jess.
Also wanna thank Kim. She has been coming to Rotary and I think there's a following that we're having more people come to Rotary and we're having to remind everybody. You can't be a guest more than twice. You have a point. So thank you for coming and she does a great job. Something you did a great job presenting to our group last week.
Yes, Mr. Morel, Morel?
Morel.
Morel. He's going, he is a toast master. If you don't know, if you know about toast masters. And he is going to be coaching me, um, every couple of weeks or so and working on my public speaking so that. As we move forward and so forth, um. See, I just said, um, and he says, I gotta quit saying, um, anyhow, so he's gonna work with me. But anyhow, I, I really wanna work towards, um, doing a, a good job and being a public speaker in something that the school district.
Okay, I've only have a couple of things. Um, a number, uh, I, it could be a couple of months ago. We actually discussed or in past a. Resolution or proclamation about the weighted vote at WASDA. Um, it was submitted to WASDA, um, and actually, um. It is in the very beginning of the agenda to take a vote on. Um, I think it's in the November meeting, at mid-November general assembly meeting, so. Um, kind of great news that the WASDA board decided to go ahead and put that, that on the, on the ballot for a vote. Um, just rumor has it, it's not sitting well with some of the large districts. So, um, so I'm pretty excited about that. Um, next item, uh. When I saw the R S V P for the Woodstrand. What was it? Dedication? Um, that's the exact same time as we typically have safety and security meetings. I would like to step away from the safety and security meeting, so I would like two of you to step up into that. So I don't know what to wanna do it, but, um. Not only with this, but with WASDA and some other stuff, I, I'm just having trouble doing, doing it all, so.
I can help with all those.
Okay, um, so.
I can do it until the end of my term.
Okay.
Be happy to do it.
So if you would like to, we just need a chair and then somebody else and then basically, if you, if you don't mind sharing it. I just set up the agenda, work with, with Kim and it's an hour before our, um. Study sessions.
And I, I own that air. I mean, I'm trying to load up a calendar and make it when we're already committed to a day or time, so.
It's okay. Woodstrand's important to dedicate and get that going. Um, I would suggest having a meeting prior to the start of school. However you wanna do that, I would leave that up to you. I think it's important to make sure we got training, security staff, our principals, um, kind of all on the same page, so.
I'll get with Kim tomorrow.
Okay. And what, and I don't have anything else. Is there any other comments you would like to make?
Right, just one that I noticed while going through. Um, on the school district app. Um, there's a section to look at the staff, um, and your teachers and all that. I don't know when it's been since that's been updated, but there's still teachers on there who don't have pictures. There's teachers who. As far as I know, don't work here anymore, some that have retired, some that, and I just think that it would be nice to see that updated to.
Thank you.
Kind of look into that more. I think so that way people have some more transparency with who they're sending their kids to see and what students know all that.
Now, is the app separate from, sorry, uh, is the app separate from the website? Different thing.
Well, they're, they're two different things, but the information should be, I mean, they, they're connected, so those, if it's not, if it's not on the app updated, it's not.
I mean, with AppTogee, our, our. Designer or our app, and I meet tomorrow, so guess what?
Um, is there an estimate on like when we could get school schedules, like our schedules for classes and stuff?
Or no? It's usually, uh. It's usually the week before school starts. Freshmen, I know, don't get theirs until they come to, they have, they. Freshmen guys will have to come to the link crew day to get their schedules, kind of their carrot to give them to show up for their link crew. Um but I'm, we haven't talked about, for elementary, it's usually on Friday.
We are, those out next Monday, this is Heights. And then the twenty first.
We need to work with the other two principals to try to align that to be at the same time. And then Mr. Naim, you know, for secondary schedules.
If we can really start it on that, Monday we will, we'll have a hard copy. Wednesday through the Friday and available all three days and then just generating.
Yeah, I was just wondering for like um time purposes for running start and stuff, so, yeah. But thank you.
Oh, that reminds me of one thing that I saw. I saw that Y B C is doing an A A at on campus in Zola, like set for four classes. So I'm gonna work on that.
I've had that article forwarded to me, I think about six times since it came.
So kids, they would, and, and we're probably close to that and there's a certain number of credits that they have to have from that college. And if C B C won't do it, I'll call Y B C. Most of our kids go to C B.
I think it'd be great to keep it here versus driving.
They said their, their kids got an A for about five hundred dollars.
So, I, I'm a Y B C running start student. Would that mean I go to Grilla and start it up?
No, no. What that means is Zilla High School, so we'd have to do it at Prosser High School, is offering all the classes but four on their campus. So you, the, for Zilla kids, they can stay and take almost all their classes at school. So that's what I'm gonna work on, to make that happen, help make that happen here. It may not be able to happen this year, but maybe for next year, so.
That'd be cool, yeah.
Yeah, it is. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other comments? Uh with that, uh our next meeting will be August sixteenth, uh right here in the library workroom. But at seven P M, that'd be a study session. No other business, if meeting is adjourned.